I'd like to call to order the council meeting for May 23. If we could have our roll call, please.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I was distracted by... Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
President.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are six members present in the quorum. Councilmembers... Excuse me, Garza and Hussein are absent.
And both of those, we will be having an excused absence later in the meeting. At this time, we have our meditation and pledge of allegiance. Before we stand for the meditation, if we could have Captain Rodney Anderson, please come down to the podium. Captain Anderson.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the time at the podium this afternoon or evening. I'd like to have everyone share with me a moment of silence. On behalf of the Lansing Police Department, we had a family member, part of our department, that passed away in a traffic crash on 496 and near Walnut yesterday. Her name was Catherine Honeycutt. And if we could have, at this time, a moment of silence for her, please. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has a moment of silence at this time? Seeing none, if we could all please rise. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and everytyne of justice for all.
Again, on behalf of Ms. Honeycutt's family, her husband, and her coworkers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have for your approval the council proceedings of May 9.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam Vice President, I move the proceedings from May 9, 2022, as printed.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
And we are to table items. We have the budget amendment.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, I remove the item be removed from the table, placed before the body.
We have a motion to remove from the table. All those, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that the fiscal year 2021-22 budget amendment be discharged to the Committee on Ways and Means.
We have a motion that this be referred to Ways and Means. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies. We have a presentation, the Lansing Police Department introduction of new officers and new social workers.
If you could please come into the well. And Captain Anderson, we'll have you at the mic to begin with and introduce our new officers and social worker. You could all right, come right into the well, all the way in. Yep. All the way in. Have you go around the horseshoe here. No, we'll have you right up here at the mic in the well, Captain. Yep. We're gonna make you front and center. Okay, right there at that microphone, and if you can speak right into it, we're good.
Okay, councilmembers, again, thank you very much for the time and very proud, on behalf of the Lansing Police Department, to present our new hires. My mouth step aside and allow them to introduce themselves and share their work.
Thank you. My name's Melissa Eisner. I am one of the new police social workers with the Lansing Police Department. I have over 20 years of experience as a social worker. My most recent position was a SUD therapist at Community Mental Health. I specialize in substance use disorders and looking forward to working with our community and helping them get connected to services and resources.
My name is Maxwell McFrorey. I'm Lebonia, Michigan. Went to MSU and then after that, I worked DK Security here at City Hall for a while. Grew to know a lot of people at the department, grew to know the city, loved it and have fun here today. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Brooks. I was born in Williamson, Michigan. Actually graduated from Michigan State University. I grew in kinesiology, also ran track there. Graduated from their ROTC program and commissioned as an officer in the Michigan Army National Guard. I chose Lansing, Michigan, because I've been here all my life and I love this place.
My name is Celia Varabano. I'm associated with criminal justice. I was for LPD for almost four years. I enjoyed it and everybody turned me into family and that's why I'm here at LPD.
My name is Christopher Mosby. I grew up in Southfield, Michigan. Went to Michigan State University. Joined LPD to continue, served in my community, run the National Guard when I was 17 years old, so join LPD, so I can continue that service.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Chafee. I grew up at Hartland, Michigan. Went to University of Michigan Dearborn, where I graduated with a bachelor's in criminal justice. I spent gross there for four years. And I joined LPD because I always wanted to be a part of helping people on a larger scale than where I was from. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Washington. I was born and raised in Lansing, Michigan. I went to, I graduated from Allen College with a bachelor's in criminal justice. I served as a park ranger at Park of Park Zoo for some time. I wanted to join LPD because I wanted to defend, protect, and serve our home.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nick McKeevey. I'm from Calhoun, Michigan. I went to Michigan State University. I came to LPD because I wanted to stay in the Lansing area. This department will have a lot of great people, a lot of great opportunities, and I'm excited to start my career here. Thank you.
Captain.
And councilmembers, thank you for the time. We're very excited about our new hires. And on behalf of Chief Sol, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity for not only council, but for the public to see our new hires as they come forward. I think this is a great opportunity to have those classes in front of us so that we can see that we are filling those vacancies as we move forward. So, thank you very much.
Our next special ceremony is tribute and recognition of the Cristo Rey Fiesta.
And that would be Councilmember Daniels. And is that something that the mayor's office has as well? Oh, all right.
All right. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Lansing. Whereas 2022, for the first time in three years, marks the return of the Cristo Rey Fiesta. And whereas the purpose of the Cristo Rey Fiesta is to bring the community together in friendship, faith, and cultural celebration. And whereas this event continues to present the best in traditional music, the most dazzling folkloric performances, the best in authentic traditional food, and a great mercado marketplace. And whereas the Cristo Rey Fiesta has become the largest Latino cultural event in mid-Michigan, attracted more than 20,000 people to this three-day event traditionally held each year during the Memorial Weekend. And whereas this annual Fiesta serves as a primary fundraiser for Cristo Rey, which helps to provide programs and services to help entire Lansing community. And now therefore, we are resolved that the Lansing City Council hereby supports and thanks the organizers of the Cristo Rey Fiesta, we hereby encourage the Lansing community to enjoy the celebration.
Can I like to move the resolution?
We have a motion to move the resolution. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Guillermo.
Thank you. Thank you, council. And I want to thank, first of all, our volunteers. You know, without the volunteers, this couldn't happen. And here we have twelve of them. Ymariano, who's our volunteer coordinator, and Mary Kay Lawrence.
Refle chair.
The refle chair. No, I don't mistake you. Anyway, they're very integral part to our Fiesta. And the hundreds of volunteers are gonna be there to the three-day event. We thank all of them, especially our seniors, who were the originators of this Fiesta 44 years ago and are still there, working as best they can, cutting the veggies and everything. They're the most important part, really. And I want to remind everybody that this year, we have a special ceremony honoring the veterans and certainly honoring those who have passed. So, it's a very special thing that we're doing for the first time, which is, I don't know why I meant the fourth, it is Memorial Weekend. So, we're gonna do that and invite everybody to come and be part of that. That's on Sunday, about 1:00 in the afternoon. Thank you very much, again.
Thank you. Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. We are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
There are comments by councilmembers. Councilmember Daniels.
All right, just a few. First, I want to thank everybody that came out to my constituent coffee hour on Saturday. It was great to see everybody. The next one will be June 25, 10:00 a.m., same place, Rio Town Depot. The Allen Farmers Market is on Wednesday, 2:30 to 7:00 p.m., inside and outside, under the mural. And the Eastside Neighborhood Organization meeting will be June 1 at 7:00 p.m. at Foster and via Zoom. And there'll be no June or July or August E&amp;O meeting. And then Summer Fest, the Eastside Summer Fest will be August 20.
Okay, other councilmembers. Councilmember Brown.
Just wanted to congratulate Endeavor House Ministries. We went to their, myself and council president Adam Hussein, as well as councilman Brian Daniels, went to their mortgage burning ceremony. So, they were having their home free and clear. Endeavor House Ministries has a transitional home for people coming out of addiction and going into recovery, as well as they were beginning a new home called Angie's House to start working with women. So, it was a great time to see many community stakeholders, including the South Side Community Coalition was present as well. And so, it was a wonderful event, doing great work in the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Just wanted to congratulate Lansing Parks and Recreation on another successful sports season. They wrapped up youth soccer this year. They played most of the games at Davis Park. And there's a great need for volunteers and coaches and referees, so much that they had to keep the numbers limited to how much it could hold. So, the kids are anxious and eager to get out there after having a few years off. And Mark Sanford with Lifetime Sports and Breck, since she once again did a great job. So, thank you to them.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. That brings up a good comment, is that summer's coming. And, you know, we are always looking for summer help to do summer programs for the City of Lansing. So, I encourage those folks who are watching, or if you have children and you want to get them out of the house and get them a great summer job, to go on the Parks and Rec webpage because they're in desperate need of paid summer work this summer. Also, the same with, you know, the YMCA. There are lots of summer jobs, but particularly for Parks and Rec, they really need people this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments? Seeing none.
Thank you, Vice President Wood. Just do want to mention that we have elections coming up, August and November. And we do now have the online absentee ballot application is available. You can go to lancingvotes.com. There's a link there for vote at home. You can apply electronically, as long as you have a Michigan ID or driver's license. We will be sending out paper applications later, or you can print off your own application from there. There's still plenty of time, but I just want to give the early heads up. And in addition to that, we will be sending out new voter information cards to voters with their new polling places and voting districts that will be in place for this August and November election. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Loretta's coming down.
Hi. Just wanted to remind people, the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will be at the ceremony on Saturday at noon in Little Arlington at Evergreen Cemetery. Will be presenting a fresh floral tribute wreath in honor and memory of all those who passed away in service of the country. We invite you to join us, noon, Little Arlington, Evergreen Cemetery.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events? All right, seeing none, I will announce that we will, in about a minute, close the sign-up for speaker registration for public comment. That is the blue sign-in sheet in the back with Suella can help you get that filled out. But we need you to do it in the next minute or so, and that would be for items five through 21 on the printed agenda. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
And who is going to be making the mayor's comments?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, then we are to public comment on legislative matters. And as I indicated, that includes items five through 21. Items five and six are public hearings that I'll read into the record. Item five, special assessment for the principal shopping district role for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. And item six is noise special permit for the Michigan Department of Transportation for construction of the Horsebrook Creek culvert replacement.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a special assessment for the principal shopping district, which is primarily includes downtown and Old Town. It's a review of the assessments. One of the things that we, there is an increase in the assessment. Another thing is they are, as you look at, in the past, they've done the assessments on just the commercial first floor. They are looking to also do assessments for the residential above. The renters won't be panted, it's for the property owner. So, there will be a slight increase in the assessment based on whether or not there is resident or occupancy in the floors above the commercial on the ground floor. I think that's it. With that, we'll start the public hearing.
All right, our next public hearing is the special noise permit from the Michigan Department of Transportation. And we have Trevor Block and Chris Glenn Bell, if I'm pronouncing the name correctly. If not, you can correct me. If you could please come into the well here and sit at the table there. If you'd make sure that the light is on and the green light is on. And if you would, yeah, right there. Good. And then if you could please explain to us the need for this noise waiver and what it entails.
Yep. Well, thank you, councilmembers, for your time tonight. We have a project on Grand River Avenue, just about a mile east of the airport. There's a culvert under the roadway right now that needs to be replaced, so we're gonna be doing that. Part of it is to, we have to install some temporary pipes underneath the road, so we have to close down the road for seven days, is what we're giving the contractor to do that. And on projects, we have the possibility of running into things underground that we don't know are there. Sometimes there's abandoned utilities, things like that, that we might not know about that's under there right now. The contractor's confident they can get it done in the timeframe that we've set up for them. But if we have the roadway closed, we would just like to have as much flexibility as possible in our work schedule to be able to get the work done and get the road open to traffic. So, you know, we submitted this noise waiver request. If 24 hours a day would be possible during that time, that'd be great. We could get it done as fast as possible, looking at traffic as, you know, our concern and obviously your residents as your concern. We'd just like to bring it to your attention. And at a minimum, we would like to do it on Saturday and Sunday at least, you know, kind of workday hours for that work, because we'd already have the road closed. And I think that just having an open hole with no work going on would be a little bit more uneasy for the residents than maybe the noise during the day on Saturdays and Sundays. So, I did submit it for two weeks, in case we ran into something bad. That, you know, that's why I was looking for the additional duration there. So, but the schedule holds them to seven days, as expected.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley has a question.
Well, that was gonna be my question, is I'm looking at the ordinance, you're asking for 13 days or two weeks versus the seven days that you're saying that you need, and that's just for unforeseen delays or...
Yeah, I would really not like to get into something that we would be having that closed for an extended duration. You know, if we got to the point where it was kind of an emergency fix that we didn't know about, and it lasted more than seven days, I'd like to not have to stop working to get it taken care of.
And you're also proposing to work 24 hours on the weekends as well?
Well, that was, I guess, you know, kind of shooting high there. We, the contractor's not intending to work at night. They're submitting their, for day work. So, our plan was to just kind of hold on to that information, and if they fell behind schedule, needed to get it open quicker, then we could allow them to work at night.
Is there a way, if you are going to work at night, that you would, is there a way for you to notify the residents or... I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, it's on the weekends, that's a lot for 24-hour noises. So, I'm just asking, is, you don't anticipate it, you just want to have that flexibility? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, yeah. The contractors made no indication that they plan on working at night or plan on... I think they'd like to work on Saturday and Sunday, but they have no intention of working at night. And we do have a mail list for all the nearby residents that, you know, we could at least come up with a way before the project started to get better contact information for them if we needed to alert them in short notice.
Just one last thing, Madam Vice President. I understand that you say you don't intend to work at night, but you're asking for 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. a waiver, right? I'm sorry, what did I miss? So, are you asking for that, or that's what I'm asking?
Well, I submitted the noise waiver request for the 24/7.
Okay.
If it wasn't for that, no, Saturday and Sunday, if that would be allowable, that would be great, to work, you know, 8:00 to 8:00 on Saturday.
Okay.
10:00 to 7:00 or something on Sunday.
Thank you. I apologize.
No problem.
Confused there. Thank you.
Councilmember Spatafor.
So, I just want to get clear, the plan is to do this all during normal noise hours, but in case you run into issues, you need the flexibility to get it done in that period of time faster.
Correct. Our contract with the contractor states that they have to work within the normal construction timeframes in the city ordinance.
But you can then, if we grant the waiver, you have the flexibility to grant them permission if they run into issues to get it done on time rather than delay the project.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Again, just for clarification, you have not, this is not written into the contract that they would be working 24 hours, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, the most that you're looking for right now is to be able to work on Saturday and Sunday?
At a, I'd say, like, at a minimum, Saturday and Sunday, yeah. I'd hate to have a hole in the road with no work going on. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that, I think that answers those questions. And you're more than welcome to stay and listen to any public comment that we have from the audience. There were a number of emails, that my understanding, that you received from Andy Kilpatrick that has transmitted those to you. So, with that, we'll go on to public comment.
Okay, we have Sean Dyer, followed by, actually, the two gentlemen that are sitting here. So, Sean, and then...
And again, this is public comment, so Sean will make his comments. If you want to talk to him afterwards, that's fine, but this is his opportunity. So, thank you.
Okay. First off, I'd like to thank everybody for your time. I know I reached out to several of you and had great discussions with you. And I sincerely appreciate, you know, you engaging me and talking to me about this. I apologize, I'm not a public speaker, so I may not be as good at this as you guys are. I'm simply a concerned resident. The construction project that everybody's talking about here is right in behind my house. It has gone on since last fall. They started working on it, taking trees down. They do say that they have a mailing list, but there was not one single resident notified that this construction was taking place at all. The lot in particular that they are using as their staging ground is privately owned, and they also failed to notify the actual property owner that they were going to cut all the trees down, put in a telephone pole, install a road, and literally destroy the property. I know if any of you guys have looked at the emails that were received, there was a link on the very end of that email that showed pictures of what it looks like. This is a corner that is not only a major intersection of Delta River and Grand River, it is also a major thoroughfare coming into the city. Anybody that stops in the airport and then comes into downtown is driving right by that corner. Anybody that comes off 96 and 69 to come into Lansing is driving by that corner. Right now, it's dirt. Ironically, there's a cleanup sign amongst all of it. But I think that asking the construction go on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, is just a bit much of an ask. And I know that you're saying that that's just a worst-case scenario. But, I mean, worst-case scenario, what if all of a sudden you guys have to do that for two weeks straight? You know, there are a number of people in that neighborhood. There's kids, there's retirees, there's people like me that wake up at 6:00 in the morning every day to work, you know? And I actually work servicing municipalities all over the Midwest and all over the country. You know, so it's not like it's just impacting a couple people, you know? And I understand that, you know, facility upgrades need to happen. You know, we need infrastructure upgrades and updates and stuff like that for this whole thing to work. But I just ask that it be done during reasonable time of day. And I also ask that steps be taken to ensure that MDOT restores that area at least close to what it used to look like. I mean, you know, first impressions are everything. And when you come into the city and you see a dirt lot that is now just gathering trash, you know, and it has been, it's been over six months that you guys have been working on this, and we see little to no movement on it. You know, they cut all the trees down, they left them scattered all over the place. There's, that's created a situation, because they didn't properly dispose of it, where people are coming and harvesting the wood at all times, the day and night, weekends. You know, I'm sure they're not contractors of any sort. And it's just, I feel that this has been managed very haphazardly, and there has been absolutely no communication with the residents in that area, with the exception of this noise ordinance waiver notice, which I believe is required by law. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, and I assume you two are good with what you already said. So, our next speaker is Chuck Schofield.
Hi, my name's Chuck Schofield. I represent OMA McPatt LLC and also 101 South Washington Development. This is more about the principal shopping district. Item number five on there. We have submitted a letter of appeal for the, for this. Hopefully, you've received it. Just wanted to say a few words that we really feel like this is an antiquated, kind of outdated form of taxation, and we feel like it's a double taxation now for the bottom-line results we're getting from Principal Shopping District and Downtown Lansing, Inc. We really don't feel like that there's a lot of results coming from Downtown Lansing, Inc. And we're, we feel like that what their charter is right now is really just... Inc., and we're, we feel like that what their charter is right now is really just the maintenance of downtown. And what do we pay our regular taxes for? Seems like that's more of a, when it comes down to it, the Department of Public Service should be handling that. So, just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that they got the letter. Thank you for letting me speak at this, at the session here, and just wanted to be heard.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I also want to indicate for the record that we received several written communications regarding the noise special permit that will be made part of the permit record, as well as an appeal of the special assessments role for the fiscal year. And with that, we are to the referral of public hearings.
The first public hearing on the PSD will go back to city operations. The second public hearing on the noise waiver will also go back to city operations. Yes, councilmember Spatafor.
Just wanted to note that the next city operations meeting is June 7th at 4:30.
For everyone's edification, that's June 7th at 4:30 for both of those items, the noise waiver and the PSD assessment. Councilmember Spitzley.
What he said.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended minus item seven, the tribute and recognition of Cristo Rey Fiesta, to include the tribute and recognition of Claude Brown's 100th birthday, tribute and recognition of June 3rd, 2022, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Item 10, polling place changes, establishment of voting locations for all precincts. Item 11, community funding, progressive empowerment, education, resource services for the Juneteenth celebration. Number 12, community funding for the Village Lansing for their Father's Day peace picnic. Number 13, the fireworks display license for the Lansing Lugnetson Power Technical Fireworks, Inc. at Jackson Field, 505 East Michigan Avenue, on various dates. As well as number 14, fireworks display license Power Technical Fireworks, Inc. for the City of Lansing's Independence Day celebration. And number 15, reappointment of Jody Washington as the first board member of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. And finally, the grant acceptance of the eviction diversion initiative.
Okay, we have a motion for the consent agenda. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to item 17, the appointment of Emily Linden to the Potter Park Zoo Board.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. What we have before us is an appointment of Ms. Emily Linden to the, as in, to the Lansing member of the Potter Park Zoo Board for a term to expire on December 31st. Ms. Linden is currently working for the City of Lansing, and she disclosed that, and so, and that's been cleared. She, this was her first choice to be on the Potter Park Zoo, and she, let's see. With that, I think I'm just going to move the, move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously. And Emily, if you could please come up, the clerk is going to swear you in.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Please discharge the duties.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The office of Potter Park Zoo Board members.
The office of Potter Park Zoo Board members.
According to the best.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The next one is the appointment of Paul Dripchak as the fourth member of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Mr. Dripchak has a great resume. His first choice was to serve on the Human Relations and Community Services Board. He has a master's in social work and a bachelor's of science and psychology from Michigan State University. We had a very good discussion with Mr. Dripchak during committee and about his, you know, excitement to be on the board, how he felt that his social work degree would be a great access, asset to serve. And with that, I move the resolution.
Yeah, motion on the resolution, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously. I do not believe he is here, is that correct?
No.
No. So he will be sworn in in the clerk's office. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Who we have before us is the appointment of Frank Lee as an at-large member of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2023. Mr. Lee is a recent resident within, you know, not recent, but he has moved here from, out of state. He was a small business owner. He has a master's in business administration. During the review, expressed a desire to serve the City of Lansing. Having discussions with him, we felt that, again, his master's of business administration would be a great asset for the Human Relations and Community Services Board, and with that, I move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously. And I do not believe Mr. Lee is here either. Okay.
Madam Vice President, if I may, both were invited and.
That, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, item 20, setting a show cause hearing for 3337 Viking Road.
Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So before us, we have the make safer demolish request for 3337 Viking Road. The house was originally red-tagged May 10th, 2019, and went before the Lansing Demolition Board April 22nd, 2021. And then this past week was, was moved through Public Safety and now sits before you. They have, they pulled permits in 19 and in 2020 and have yet to do any work or communicate again with the city. And so with that, I'd like to move the resolution setting a show cause hearing for June 13th.
Thank you, we have a motion before us, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. We have, and councilmember Wood introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing codified ordinances by amending Chapter 1460, Section 1, and the International Property Maintenance Code adopted by reference to provide for issuance of trash, weed, and grass violation notices and compliance orders, and that uncorrected violations are nuisances and provide an appeals process and permit the city to abate uncorrected violations and recover costs. This ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole. Is that correct? Committee on Public Safety.
Public Safety. I would pass the gavel.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, councilmember Spatafor. What we have before us is an amendment to our housing code resolution or ordinance. The purpose of this is currently if we have trash that's in the backyard, we can obtain an administrative search warrant to be able to go into the backyard to clean up unnecessary trash or grass and weeds. The problem that has arisen is when a property is in question of ownership, then we have the difficulty of trying to track down an owner to serve them with the proper documentation in order to allow us to abate that nuisance. So what this ordinance does is gives us the ability to move forward on that. So we would be setting the public hearing for June 13th. And with that, I would move setting the public hearing.
That is a proper motion, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, the gavel is yours.
Thank you, councilmember Spatafor.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters, that is the yellow sheet in the back with Suella. And if you would like to address the council, you'll have up to three minutes, but you need to get that submitted within the next 15 seconds. You need to jump up. And otherwise, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam Vice President, I move that all items be considered and as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you.
We have a motion before us, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we have from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
And from the mayor, a ballot proposal to amend the city charter to modify the requirements for serving on city boards, commissions, or committees.
A committee of the whole.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Councilmember Spatafor.
I move that we excuse all members absent.
We have a motion to excuse councilmembers Garza and Hussein, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Do we have any remarks by councilmembers?
Or the mayor.
Do you have any from the mayor?
No, thank you, thank you, city council.
And just, this is just to remind everyone that on Memorial Day, that on, on Monday, we, our offices are closed, as well as most all city offices. So I want to make that clear. And again, as was mentioned, that Saturday before, we do have the memorial service that is held at Evergreen Cemetery. So there is an opportunity for people to be involved in that.
Okay, we're, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have Harshna Kahal followed by Michael Mercer. Or Marsha, the handrail is a little.
She's not here.
Okay. Michael Mercer.
Kara, I'd like to also say something that I forgot to say here a couple weeks ago when I was talking about those sidewalks when you were talking with Brekashinsky down here, the Parks and Rec Director, that, who brought that up, how I knew it was not the citizens' responsibility to pay if it's caused by one of the trees in between street and sidewalk, that is a city tree. It was councilmember Joan Bauer, if you remember her, you were here, you were an at-large council member, she was an at-large council, and so was Brian Jeffries. And I remember she brought that up, and that's how I know it is the city's responsibility, because I remember back when, early 2000s, when she was here, before she got a job working at the Capitol, that she said it's the city's responsibility, but not the citizens. And did you guys get those pictures of? That I, of course, had taken here a couple days ago on the 21st. And you see, it's over there on the west side of town, they're coming from that subdivision over in Eaton County, which is considered Lansing, which really, to my opinion, should be considered the township. But anyhow, Glenburn and Waverly, they were coming on over to the Churchill Downs subdivision in Lansing, and on that bike trail on Waverly Road, which is illegal for those motors, those type of motorcycles, or it's illegal to ride on the sidewalk, like it's illegal on the bike trails downtown Lansing. They get away with all the time, it seems like. And on top of that, a couple weeks ago, when I gave you the ones doing wheelie over there on, what is it, Glenbrook and Deerfield, you should put those speed bumps in the subdivision so kids and anybody riding those things won't go that fast, is what they are doing. 45, 50 mile an hour, that's too darn fast in a subdivision. Subdivision is what, 25 mile an hour? You should put those speed bumps in so they won't go that fast in those subdivisions. And they're not going on the bad roads like Deerfield that has so many potholes, they're going on those roads that don't have potholes like that Glenbrook, don't have no, it's a road that don't have hardly any potholes. So I suggest you guys put those speed bumps so the people won't go that fast.
Okay, thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.
7:46.